I gotta finish work, you know how this is.
Sounds good, sounds good.
I just had a lady, I just had a lady, she was ninety, ninety, ninety-seven years old.
Really?
God bless.
Yeah, shit crazy.
It is. Okay.
Alright, alright, that's all.
Thanks for coming through, we'll see you soon. Um, right, cool folks. Not sure who's in here, but what I just wanna kinda do is talk about how I hold my place, um, risk management, um, trading mentality, cuz it all kinda ties into each other when it comes to swing trading, okay? So along with strategy, so the very first point I wanna make, I've got snow up here, you guys know I took snow calls, right? Um, very, very first point I wanna make is, when we enter a trade, we get multiple chances. When I talk about multiple chances, I'm talking about multiple chances to reassess our strategy, multiple chances to take profit, multiple ta- chances to sell, um, to take, uh, to cut losses, multiple chances for a lot of things. So, if, sorry, if you go to the four hour chart for snow, as I said earlier today to you guys, I'm holding. Yes, moving averages crossing to the downside, yes, it's more bearish than bullish right now. But the real thing I want you guys to see here, and it's an important thing, this is why I'm holding this one, and it might work out, it might not work out, okay? How did I get the box up? How did I get a little box? Hmm, I wanna draw the zone. Where's the box up?
It's under.
It's under the paintbrush.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Alright, cool. So we had a period here during September, this is the four hour chart, the period here is during September where we couldn't break. Let's call it, let's take it from here, this little area, right? You see where we struggled to break up, oh. Alright, so this is September, right? You can see price, you know, touched, pushed into, never broke above this little zone. Last week, or two weeks ago, sorry, we finally broke out. A few green candles back to back, we broke out really strong, nicely pushed all the way from hundred and tw- uh, hundred thirteen all the way up to hundred twenty-seven, okay? So this zone is a strong zone for a couple reasons. First of all, when price pushed up into this zone, it kept failing to break out of the zone. It's, it's, you could look at it as a strong, um, resistance point, alright? When we finally broke out, you see what happened, we flew. That's the first thing. Second thing, price is now falling back into this same zone, cuz if I was to extend this zone, right? I'm making a new one, right? You see price is falling back, and now look at the wicks. I'll put it up a little bit. Right, we wicked into the zone, we've got a green candle building in the zone, this, this four hour candle closed in the zone. I'm gonna pull up the daily chart as well. Alright, you see? This is an area where we could potentially bounce. Now, when I say potentially bounce, I know it's, it sounds very uncertain, right? Cuz anything can happen, it could potentially bounce, it could also potentially fall straight through. Cool. But that's the risk we take on when it comes to trading, and now this is why, this is why I'm gonna explain to you in a different way, we're using a different stock, right? You see, so it's pretty much support resistance, right? This zone that I have marked out, the zone is my own technical analysis. It, it might not really be a, a real zone, who knows? Like, it's all up to our own interpretation, right? Someone else could see this and say, this is a potential for crashing. Yeah, it could be. But again, I wanna see what price does at this level. As you saw today, on the hourly chart, you can see, if we zoom out on the hourly chart, what happened when we got to the bottom of the zone? We started, we got a green candle, and we started rising again. After hours were slightly up, we'll see how it pans out here. My aim is to get us back up right around here, I'm gonna draw a line right around this hourly, right around here, okay? Hundred seventeen, now, I'll be honest with you. If we get to a hundred seventeen, our calls are still not actually good. We need to break that and get back up to these levels, a hundred twenty, right? To be in the money and for our calls to be good. But if we get back up to a hundred seventeen, it's gonna be a lot, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be a better indication of what I should be doing next. If we get up to a hundred seventeen, all the moving averages and we sell back off, cool, I'm gonna cut out. If we get up, we break above, then obviously I know what to do. Wait to see how, how high we go before we pull on back and retest, or, you know, wait to see what happens at that level. But I do believe, when you have support resistance marked out like this, when you have zones where price fails to break above, old levels of resistance, so this is resistance, can become new level of support. So for me, based on my charting, my analysis, how I trade, this is a level of support, this is a strong level of support. Based on what, um, the rest of the stocks in this sector do as well, it's gonna have an effect on what, um, Snowflake does. This is cloud service, technology, um, software, so you wanna look at other stocks like, uh, Pan W, Palo Alto. You wanna look at stocks like, um, CrowdStrike. You wanna look at, you see, um, you wanna look at trying to think what else is there, maybe Atlassian, I don't know what their ticker is. Team, you know, just to kinda see what could potentially happen. But yeah, back to what I was saying. If I was supposed to select price targets for snow, cuz wisdom buzz, you asked me earlier, first one at a hundred seventeen forty-four. Second one, just get us back to in the money, around a hundred twenty, around here, okay? Last time we were here, we took off. Last time we were here, we also sold off and failed to break above a couple times. So that's snow. So the reason I wanna do that, sorry, the reason why I wanna show you guys that to start off with, cuz you need to have a basis of how you trade. Um, Google is what we traded yesterday, right? Google was this, Google and Palantir was the last couple swings I took. Google's hourly chart, this is, this one was pretty simple for me. Um, in fact, I'm gonna start from daily and I'm gonna narrow it down, okay? So daily chart, and I took a picture of this, and I screenshot it, and I dropped it in the group, uh, a couple days ago. So if you look in the student chart section, you should be able to see it. Um, also, I don't have the Discord chat up right now cuz I'm sharing a screen, and I'm just using one screen, I'm not, not using my other screen. So someone writes something in the chat, or they ask me something, just let me know, please. So Google. Daily chart, right, it's consolidating along the lines of these moving averages, right? Honestly, when I took it Friday, um, zoom in a bit, I took the trade Friday. Friday, okay. Um, when I took the trade Friday, the aim was just to swing it back up, you know? Back up to these levels right here, around a hundred sixty-seven, fifty, around higher. When I took the trade Friday, it was a risk cuz it was an overnight hold, over weekend hold, sorry. Now, with this, in this case, we all know what happened yesterday, right? This is the daily chart again. Daily chart is not, is neutral. Daily chart is consolidating, right? It's not bearish, it's not really bullish. It's, it's, it's pretty neutral. We're talking about yesterday. Go to the four hour. Similar story, right? Holding, look at that, Friday, look at that, it's holding, right? It's not, it's not bearish, it's neutral, it's, it's just consolidating. Now, where the issue came in? And as you get, get closer to, you know, smaller timeframes, okay, hourly again, pretty neutral, pretty okay, alright? This is where the issues start to come in, yesterday, fifteen minute chart, okay? Two, two things I'm gonna highlight from yesterday. So, first thing, yesterday, we got a breakout to start the day, cool? Doge, huge red fifteen minute candle, we start to sell off, right? Moving average crossed to the downside, it looks a lot bearish. Remember, this is a swing trade, it's not a day trade, it's a swing trade, so I bought it Friday, when we were somewhere here, probably a hundred sixty-three, somewhere there. We dropped, what, a dollar, a dollar fifty, something like that? Of course, you know, the natural reaction, you know, is for us to be like, damn, what is going on? Like, I need to sell out cuz it's gonna tank. Fine, I have no problem with that, you know, it's natural to react like that, you know, usually you would think that. But why I always tell you guys, zoom out. Zoom out. Hourly chart from yesterday. We pushed up and we sold off. We didn't really, unless you had a really bad entry, we didn't really suffer too much, because next couple candles, we're back up. This is a swing trade, remember, it's a swing trade. It's all in the charts, four hour chart. Uh, Monday, right? Yesterday. Four hour chart yesterday, and you, obviously you're swinging, so you know, you're, you're intraday, you're looking, you're thinking what's going on, you know, all that kinda stuff, right? Four hour chart yesterday. You see, you look at this kinda, you click at this kinda price action, alright, pre-market, green candle, whatever, red candle, that's not irrelevant. The, the four hour candle on, on yesterday is green. You won't know that until aftermarket, I understand. So what you wanna do, to get yourself some realistic perspective, is go to the smaller timeframes after you zoomed out. So you know, you go from one day to the four hour to the one hour, et cetera. But you do wanna continuously look at the different timeframes to give yourself some perspective. I looked at the hourly chart yesterday, that was what I was using to trade, cuz it's a swing trade, it's Monday. If it was Wednesday, Thursday, I might trade it differently. Hourly on Monday, first couple hours, price action looks fine to me, right? Sure, one red candle, followed by three green candles. So there's no reason for me to sell. How about? You're sleeping. So, one thing I need you guys to notice with a lot of these trades is, I'm trusting the chart, I'm trusting the chart. Sometimes it's not gonna pay off, like, Google was consolidating, it was not showing it's completely bearish, no. It did pull on back pretty heavily, I understand that. So we were down like thirty-eight, maybe forty percent, I don't know, I didn't look, because I'm like, look, if we break down below and we start selling off heavily, past where we've consolidated the last, you know, few trading days, sure, I'll sell. But lo and behold, what happens? Consolidation. Four, let me go to the four hour. What happens? Consolidation, moving averages aren't really, you know, doing nothing too negative, we start to break out. Tuesday, we break out. Suddenly, we're up sixty percent in Google. We didn't do anything magical. If you, if you'd taken the entry yesterday during the consolidation, um, look at the hourly chart, if you'd taken a trade yesterday during the consolidation, or, or, wait, a lot of fifteen, maybe it's better. Alright, yeah, if you were taking a trade yesterday during any of this consolidation towards the last couple hours of the day, well then you would've been up even more than us, uh, today. Taking a trade down here was a risk, was a gamble, but it obviously still paid off. Taking a trade where I took it was a risk, was a gamble, cuz by the time it pulls on back a bit, it's a little bit worrying, and you're down quite a lot. Risk management does say, take twenty, twenty-five percent, thirty percent. I completely agree with that. But what does the chart say? Chart says, I'm not really breaking any levels, I'm not really breaking any levels of support. Sellers were never really in control. Look, last time sellers was in control, below this level was way back when, Thursday. So it has nothing to do with, Thursday, I'm talking about Thursday two weeks ago, by the way, not last week, Thursday. So it has nothing to do with my trade now. If we break this level, we hold below, and I see candles closing below, sure, I'm gonna sell, I'm gonna panic, all that kinda stuff. But probably, I'll be honest with you, probably not on a Monday or a Tuesday, maybe the Wednesday, the Thursdays, we get closer to expiration yet. On a Monday, I'm not selling this, when I just bought in on a Friday, it's too quick for me to sell off. Does that make sense? Uh, OP3 Juice, I know you asked a question regarding that. Don't know if you're able to talk about. Um, I wanna pick another, oh, so go ahead.
I mean, if you still wanna answer, my fault.
No, go ahead.
Oh, for sure. Uh, well, when, when you say the, um, the seller's in control, what are you looking at? That confirm whether the seller's in control or the buyer's in control? I know the volume tells you something about that too, but I don't know, it's kinda tricky for me when I'm looking at a chart to tell if a buyer, if the buyer's in control, if the seller's in control.
Yeah, definitely. So there's a couple things you look at. First of all, you see how, when I say seller's in control, let me give you a good example. Here, you see this long wick? Crazy long wick, right? That's them, this is, this is, this is a pre-market, but that's them trying to push price action down, sorry, trying to push price down this way. The candle is closing up here, you see the body of the candle is small. So, I don't wanna say this wick is irrelevant, cuz it's not irrelevant, but where's price closing? Price is closing back at one sixty-three twenty, not down here at one sixty-two. You see, when I say seller's in control, I wanna see, see how this is a large candle? Yes, okay, it looks like seller's in control, cool. We still haven't broken the lower day. When we did break the lower day, when I say seller's in control, I wanna see, not only the moving averages start going down, I wanna see these candles, the bigger bodies closing, 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 sure. A good example is, I'll find you a good example now, here. This is a good example. When I say seller's in control, look at the price action. Look at the price action here. Okay? Cool, regular body. First of all, if you see this, huge body, close, regular body, okay, smaller body, bigger body, close. That's okay, bigger body, close. Now it's getting back to back red candles. This is also the number of red candles in a row. If you've got four red candles in a row, right, like we have here, yeah, it's very bleak. Sellers are pretty mu- you would think seller's in control. That's the fifteen minute chart, right? I'm not trading the fifteen minute chart. If I'm scalping or day trading, yeah, then in my eyes, the sellers are in control when I see four, five red candles, cool. When I go to the hourly, they're not, they're not in, hold on, they're not in control of anything. Uh, whereas Monday, okay, cool, here. Again, the wicks I was just talking about, the wicks are up here, the body is closing here. The wicks are long, the long wicks don't, they're not telling me a lot apart from people are trying to push the price down there, or that's what the bids and the us are, you know, consistently trading at, but they're not really winning nothing. You know when someone's in control? When you see something like this, and this is funny cuz it's pre-market, so it's irrelevant, big body closes, back to back to back red candles on an hourly chart, on a four hour chart, on a daily chart, that's when I know it's in control. The fifteen minute, they're in control here if you're day trading. If you're scalping, they're in control here if you're scalping, day trading, right? If you, if you're trading the hourly, the candles will tell you the story, like I said, same as the pri- the candles, the price action, all that, you just use it together. Here, hourly, one big red can, sorry, but long red wick, pretty big body, but hey, we're getting back to back green, green, uh, candles. This is also a very good indication of what's happening. This is a green wick. This is where they pushed price down to, all the way to here. Body closes here, we close higher than we opened on the hourly, we're looking good. In between the moving averages as well, we're looking fine. A lot of it, I mean, it's difficult to explain when I say, um, when I say you've gotta trust the chart, cuz obviously, you know, you can, you never know what's going on, right? You never know what's going on. But if you zoom out, you'll get the, the story of who's in control. Here, they tried to be in control, if this is closed red, and the body was, you know, a little bit, a bigger body, yeah, sure, and then the next candles were red, okay? But one red candle amongst five red candles, you can't really tell me somebody's in control. If you look at a four hour chart, and you see, what, three green candles, one red, which is, I'm, I'm, I've got the extended hours on here. Alright, as you see, uh, this is where we are, yeah, four hour chart, you see these big green closes on the four hour, you shouldn't be too worried. Let me show you snow. Snow, look at snow now. We got those, uh, little zones. Yesterday was a tough one, four hour chart. Before that, we were okay. Today, we sold, we sold off, cool. There's a little bit of trouble there, but then, next candle is a green candle, and we're looking a lot better than before. This is the crazy jump, kinda, no, I wouldn't say overnight gap down, cuz it kinda sold off, I mean, I don't know how much. I don't call it a gap down, but we'll say it sold off he- pretty heavily overnight. Four hour does look like it got, but it's not really. See the daily?
Okay, unlike the four hour right here, you see how it was three back to back, uh, it was, I know the two, this is two on the right, with the, like, you see, what, what day is that? You seen them three back to back red candles?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know the two of them are like kinda small, but would that indicate that it's starting to become bearish, like that the sellers are starting to take in the control?
Hundred percent.
Or would you still? And be like, nah, we straight?
Nah, I would be, I would be, if I took, if I was in calls here, or here, I'd be a little bit more worried. The reason I got calls here is because I was, uh, first of all, on the hourly chart, it was already, uh, green candles here, as we're ending Friday. Uh, Friday, here we go. Uh, and then Monday, yesterday, okay, we had green, we had red, we had red, we had green. It was more like, uh, okay, we're holding in between the moving average, sure, we could fall down here, but we could also be start, start our run back up to the one twenty-five, one, you know, one twenty-seven level. So yeah, if you're in here and you see this, yeah, sellers seem to be in control for a little bit, right? I agree with that. When we went, obviously when I entered, was here, they weren't really in control again. I'm hanging in between moving averages, the candle and the wicks closing in between moving averages. You know, we, we could be consolidating for a little bit for either a breakout or a sell-off. Here, we sold off, but again, next stage, I look at this and I'm like, okay, well, we're holding price, sorry, price is holding above the resistance level, or highest, price is holding this, this little zone here. So yeah, if I was here, yeah, sellers look to be in control. Let me check what day, that was Wednesday. Wednesday. Yeah, see, then there's a Doge on Wednesday, which could indicate a reversal, potential reversal. It didn't happen really. Yeah, but, um, yeah, any other question?
Appreciate that.
Sorry, a quick question from me.
Go ahead. The more questions, the better, guys. For, so, before you, before you speak, just wanna let everyone know, everyone who's in here, I can't really see, probably like ten or twelve of you. If you've got any question, just interrupt me. Don't let me just speak, just interrupt me. Here's the place to ask questions, here is the place I wanna help you guys out, like, uh, in regards to anything, mindset, mentality, actual trading style, what you would look for, all that stuff, just let me know.
Yes, so you know, on, uh, Snowflake, right? So it's a hundred seventeen point forty-four, it's like the next um, price for its break. How did you come up with that, like?
Yeah, great question.
Like, how did you decide that, basically?
Yeah, one, one sec. There we go. Okay. Okay, cool. So, here we had a gap down, right? So there's a few points. First of all, you always wanna zoom out, so you can get an idea. So I'm gonna do this to you. You wanna get an ide- oh, gosh. You wanna get an idea of support or resistance? So, here we go. So I wanna draw a line somewhere here. Reason being, somewhere here, right? So the aim is, where price struggled to previously break above, also where price previously, um, so how do I describe it? Here, when we broke above this level, we flew, right? We broke above this level and flew. Here, we tried to test this level, here a few times, sold off. Again, here, we broke above this, we flew above this. One long green handle, we flew above this. Here, looks like we, I mean, it looks like we yeah, we pushed up, let me turn it down a little bit lower. See how we wicked off this level on the daily chart? And then this is what you wanna do. Four hour chart, it's support or resistance pretty much. Here, back in August, we broke above, came back down. We finally broke above and we flew above. So if you want another target, like, it would be somewhere here, let's say here, right? Again, where the, the bodies of these candles are closing, where we sold off, where we struggled to break above. So, that's another level, let's just call it a level, um, that we'd look to, to reach based on previous patterns. And now, when you zoom out, this is what, this is the key, when you zoom out. So you see here? Right, again, body of these couple candles are closing in and around this level. So this one seventeen sixty-four or forty-four, whatever, it's, uh, let's call it more of an estimate, it's not an exact number, it's more of an estimate that you wanna look at for price to close above or below. Um, or price to reach, uh, depending on what your trading calls or puts. Again, we come out to this day and age. Here, we got to those levels, we broke above. Here, we got to those levels, we pushed up, failed to break above. It's just a level to look out for, I'd, I'd call it like that. Yeah.
I'm looking at snow, I'm looking at snow beyond a, uh, I don't know how much time you get on it, but as I look more and more at this chart on the higher timeframes, I think a, a call option for at least six months out can pay.
I would do that, but I need to see price break above these moving averages, I need to see price show a bit more bullish sign, something like this. Thing is, even when this happened, it sold off, but I need to see something like this. So yeah, I do agree with you though.
This, this is the, well, the month of September was the lowest it ever been.
Yeah, hundred and twelve, I think it was.
Yeah, this is profitable company. There's no reason it should be this low.
Exactly. Exactly that. There's no reason it should be this low. Look at, look at all its, um, I won't call them competitors, but the companies in the same industry, they are, they are.
There's a Pan W.
Yeah.
CR, Pan W.
Salesforce, yeah. The cloud services, they're not suffering like this.
Uh, Stareum.
Um, even, uh, what's it called? Oh, what's it called again? Um, Oracle, yeah. They're not struggling like this. Hmm, CrowdStrike. They're not, none of them are struggling like that. But it looks like it could be opportunity there.
It's a low risk, high reward type of play.
Exactly that. So maybe I-
If it hits the low of September, just take yourself out the trade.
Facts. September lows is crazy, though.
It's one twelve, what's September low?
I think one ten.
For snow.
Yeah. One oh eight fifty-six.
It's only about eight dollars away.
Yeah.
That's not too bad for like a six month swing, or if you wanna buy shares.
It isn't.
Fifty-two week low, it's one oh seven thirteen.
Yeah, that day.
You should remember a year ago, or not, less than ten months ago, this thing was at two thirty-seven. So you're getting this thing at a hundred percent discount?
Yeah, February, yeah.
More than a hundred percent discount.
Exactly.
Yeah, snow, snow is a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful play, possibly.
Yeah.
So would you also think of maybe news as well?
Yeah, definitely.
That comes with it, like, you know, like Annalise saying, I'm just looking at an insane.
Analysts will say this is a buy, right? Snow. So I'm sure they will say it's a buy.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like, it's, to me, it looks like, you know, it was consolidating at the lows for a few weeks. Try to break out, came back down, back tested it, hopefully about it, like, this was a, today was a great entry.
It was.
And also, in my, in my opinion, for like, like, snow step, for like, you know, I went a little crazy, got some weekly, but.
Like, if this fundamentally, like, the financials line up, where this company's making money quarter over quarter, year over year, there's no way this company should be down here this low, right?
No.
For me, if you, like, for me, why I say it'd be a good swing, so if you pull up the fifty moving average, just change one of those moving average to a fifty moving average?
Sure.
And go to your daily?
Alright, yeah, I'm on daily.
You can see how price the whole year has been underneath that fifty moving average, and it broke above it.
Yeah.
So now, is it reversing the trend to stay above it over the next year? Like, this is one of those low risks. If you're wrong, you're wrong. Oh, well. What if you're right and it respects that fifty moving average for the next year, two years?
You're gonna win big.
Cuz look, it, it respected it all year, every time it came to the fifty movement average on the daily, got rejected.
Every time.
You know what, I'm getting like some, some, when metal was under a hundred type.
Yeah.
You know, could be something like that.
Factual, very good.
I leave on it. There ain't no reason for me to be at ninety dollars, when it was at ninety dollars, you know?
Yeah.
But that's it, that's what I said, the more I look at this on a higher timeframe, even on a monthly, you can see, eh, on September, it put in Doge candle, so that lets you know sellers got exhausted, if you go to the monthly.
Oh.
I put in a doge candle.
They are not, mhm, they are not, mhm, green as well. Bruh.
Like, it didn't close below the lowest ever been. It did not close below.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, 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 I heard, back to back green months as well.
And snow, yeah, 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 I did. I like how you said it's, it's a, it's a real low risk play, because the lows is so close.
Yeah.
If it play, if, if you get some time or some contracts, you know, put a, put a little. You know, get a little ninety day out, you know, whatever you could get, if you get that, break the lows and let it go.
Do you know what this reminded me of? A player I called last year. A player I called last year in November, you wanna guess?
What's that? I, I wasn't here, what's that?
PayPal.
Probably in the fifties, or forty.
Fifty-one, fifty-one dollars, fifty-one dollars, last year. Um, November. Let me see, if I can find it, last year, November. Here we go. Fifty-one dollars, right? It was setting off, it was setting off bad. It was getting clapped, but you know what? Look. The main thing was, they just, I mean. This is where we combine technical and fundamentals, they just got a new CEO, uh, Alex Karp. They had a great balance sheet, great income statement, they were making money, they were making, they were profitable, they were still expanding their horizons in, um. With, um, Venmo, other stuff as well. They were beating estimates each and every earnings, but it was just a stock that people didn't want, people were just not flocking to. Investors just wasn't moving to it. Back then. People was like, oh, it's just PayPal, I was like, okay. I'm not saying I'm gonna dump my whole, my life savings in it, but this is a low risk carryout play, get a few shares. This is an online payments, uh, company that's been killing it for years, and when I say killing it. I know people say, oh, I don't use PayPal anymore, everybody use PayPal on some forms, you use Venmo, you're using PayPal, you don't know that, but you're using it. Um, this business is scalable too, you know, they, they can get a little bit of commission in other p- other, um, not just Venmo, but other apps as well. It's one of those companies where you're like, this is valuable, it don't have to show on the chart right now. But it's gonna rise again, it might not get back up to the, what was it, two hundred fifty? Wow. Three hundred, it might not get back up to three hundred, but from fifty dollars, from eighty dollars. You got, you got a good opportunity at your hands. There's growth in it, electro- electronic, look, electronic payments, when it comes to the stock market. PayPal is up there, I don't know, I think you've got Block, PayPal, um, do Stripe have a stock? No, they don't, see, you got Block, you got PayPal. Uh, I don't even know which other ones are there. Uh, what's that one, QuickBooks or Intuit, I don't know if those are. Nah, you see, you don't have.
Square.
Yeah, Square is Block.
I think you said Square.
Yeah, Square is Block, Intuit, okay, you don't have that many, though, it's not like the cloud sector, cloud. Say again?
Apple Pay.
Yeah, but that.
Apple Pay.
Part of Apple, though, that's part of Apple, but yeah, I'm saying like individuals, uh, like on the, online payments, uh, individually as a company, yeah. You don't have that many, like, that are publicly traded. So if someone wants to flock to something like that, they go into PayPal. So, CrowdStrike reminds me, sorry, Snowflake reminds me a little bit of, um. What's it called? PayPal, a little bit. Um. That's pretty much what I got, I do need to go to dealership in about six minutes, so. What did I see with P L T R the other day? Um, Palantir, right?
You in the car, right?
Um, I might, I feel like I've, I've been saving some money the last couple months, I think it's time to, you know, maybe get something, nothing crazy, but something nice. I don't like to make money and just keep it, like, just hold it, you know what I mean? Um. Uh, what was the question again? He said PayPal, what did I see in PayPal? Oh, yeah, this, sorry, Palantir, bruh, I'll be honest with you, this is very easy, this one, look. Every time we break above the moving average, we pull back. We respect it, we move higher, we pull out, we respect it, we move higher, the day I entered the trade was Thursday or Friday, I think Friday. Yeah, maybe Thursday, either way, it was a day when I'd seen it settle for three days, and I was like, licking my lips, I was like, come on, I said. I said, I said, keep pulling back, it's cool, keep pulling back, because I know what you're gonna do next. You're not breaking below, you might wick below, you're not closing below, four hour chart, watch, watch, just watch. Palantir is, is very easy, guys, Palantir is not even, anybody who's trading Palantir right now. You're only gonna take it out if you're impatient. Or you're too eager and greedy, here, we're not trying to take the trade here. We're trying to take it close to the moving average, we're not taking the trade out here, if you're taking it here, you're taking calls here, you're risking it, it's actually, it's funny, because it will. Work out, but it, it, that's a risk, wait for it to pull on back. Wait for it to pull on back, take your calls, let it trend above the moving average. We don't know how high it's gonna go, let it trend above, take your profit, let it sell off again. The reason the other week, when I made the crazy one, when I took, um, I don't remember what, oh wait, was it last year? I don't remember. Either way, the week when I made like five hundred percent return, is only because I took the trade here. So that was kinda easy, and it ran all the way up to here, okay, that ain't that impressive, this one, this week's a little bit more difficult. You know, because it's, it's paying close attention to the moving average, let's wait, let's wait, let's wait, guys, trust me, I don't wanna get the trade here. I mean, we'll kinda give you an idea. Right, let it come down to these levels, somewhere here, forty-two fifty-seven, okay? Let it drop like forty cents and start up trending again, you know I'm gonna be there, ride it up to here. Eh, this one is very easy, you've got the moving averages, is, is, like, here would have been a bit scary, sure, cool. But where we are now, this ain't easy, I mean, sorry, consolidation here, you know, slowly up trending here, this ain't difficult. Make sure, if you're trading Palantir, you just zoom out, Palantir is gonna pay you, zoom out, also, get yourself some shares. I forgot, I need to post that one today, I've got some shares of this, more shares. Trust me, Palantir ain't difficult for you, if you, if you, if you're patient, if you're patient, that's it. That's it, alright?
Hey Prince, don't forget to change your E M A back to two hundred.
Oh, thank you, thanks for reminding, thanks for reminding. Yeah, so, where we are right now, it might consolidate, it might wait, that's fine, when it pull back and start setting up again, you know I'm there. Every ti- I think I've traded this, I think, three or four times in the last month, here, consolidation, I said, oh, I know what's coming next. Pull back, a breakout, cool, it sold off, I said, okay, I'm wait, I'm wait, I'm wait, take the trade again, now, we get to the point where. You know, you need to, you need to get ready to trade it again. But, yeah, I'm gonna head to dealership, wanna look at a couple things, you know, um. Today finished slightly green, yesterday finished red, so I need to make sure I get something respectable, no, no crazy car. Yeah, you know. I did record this session, though, so, if you're watching on YouTube, please remember, depending on when you watch this, the price action may have changed, the price, the sto- price of the stocks may have changed. Um, if you are in the Discord. And you've got any questions, just let me know. Uh, appreciate all of you guys, and any questions, just feel to write them in the, in the chat, just text, um. Sorry, write them in the trade discussions tab, and, uh, we'll take it from there, but appreciate all of you guys for tapping in, and we'll speak.